I would like to call to order the November nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five Regular Board Meeting of the Fenton Community High School District One Hundred Board to order. May I have a roll call?
Matuuk, Goodrich.
Here.
McCullough.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Rodzinski.
Here.
Figaroa.
Here.
We have a call. Please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Sam, please read our mission, belief, and bison way statements.
Yes, sir. Fenton mission statement: Cultivate successful, passionate, empowered learners through rigor, relevance, and relationships. The Fenton belief statement: Successful, passionate, empowered learners thrive when we provide a safe, caring, and welcoming environment. Diversity, equity, and inclusion unify our community. School and home collaborate as one. We champion innovative teaching and engaged learning with state-of-the-art facilities. We infuse social, emotional learning into academics and culture. We prepare students to fulfill their civic responsibility. We immerse students in authentic life experiences. The bison way: Students and adults at Fenton High School create a safe, caring, empathetic environment where we believe in each other, respect diversity, communicate openly, grow together, and hold each other to high expectations to become the leaders and innovators of the future.
Recognition, Sam.
Okay, so we are going to start out. We have a lot of recognition today, quite honestly, and it covers the gambit. But we're going to start out with National Board Members' Day, which was November the fifteenth. We have a small token of appreciation, as you can see here on your table. You feel free to trade if you'd like, if you like a different flavor or whatever. But seriously, as Board of Education members, you guys volunteer a lot of time, especially the last few weeks. A lot of time even on Saturdays, special meetings, things like that, because you have a strong commitment to this community and to the parents and students. So I'd like to thank you for all the time that you've put in. There's a few quotes here that I wanted to read regarding this started in the state of Illinois in two thousand seven. This recognition is a way to honor those citizens who devote so much of their time and energy for the education of our children. And another way to put it is you, as you serve on this board, you're a local voice for community education decisions. And we have a tremendous community here, school community, and I appreciate each and every one of you for your commitment, so thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, we also want to honor our Vice President Leo Figaroa, who is the new IASB Director-at-Large for DuPage County. You may ask, what is that? Well, IASB is Illinois Association of School Boards. And in a recent district meeting, we had a vote, and the vote was unanimous. In fact, we have some actual footage of that event, if we could please play the video.
I know you had a friend in the audience.
Yes, I moved. I'm taking two pills and just placed elected by.
Do I have a second? Thank you. All, it has been moved and seconded that we elect a slate by acclamation. So let's vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Opposed, say nay. Thank you. The ayes have it, the slate has been elected. Thank you.
As you could see, it was unanimous. And we're proud of Leo, as he now represents the Fenton Board throughout DuPage County. So what do they actually do? A Director-at-Large is a voting member of the Board of Directors, helps to provide strategic direction for the organization, which includes representing member interests, supporting advocacy efforts, and serving on committees. Basically, the Director-at-Large has sort of more of a broad, a broad approach to governance and policy. So Leo, thank you for representing us, and we appreciate you spending even more time representing our community. So thanks, Leo. And now we'll turn it over to Kate.
All right, good evening. Could I have the girls' cross-country team please come to the front? All right, this is very exciting. So from previous years, we all know that Fenton is home to one of the best cross-country runners in the entire state. She has stood before you on two previous occasions, and we'll talk more about her in a second. But additionally, today I am proud to say that we have one of the best cross-country teams in the entire state. So this team includes Jocelyn Wade, Susanna Malinowski, Amy Krupa, Molly Adamczyk, Gianna Christerna, Matilda Piscors, Nikki Mateu, Kai Zamora, Jocelyn Honorato, and Evelyn Estrada. So to qualify as a team, you typically need exceptional times from at least five of your runners. That's a huge accomplishment considering there were over a hundred runners at the sectional meet. Our records show that only one other Fenton Girls' Cross-Country Team has ever qualified for state, and that was in two thousand twelve when our assistant coaches, Giselle Garcia and Mimi Valloy, were students on that team. So we are incredibly fortunate to have that institutional knowledge on our staff, mentoring our students, along with Head Coach Frank Heckstat and the other assistant coaches. A little bit more about Jocelyn. Senior, right behind me, all right. Senior Jocelyn Wade has been to state before as an individual qualifier in two thousand twenty-three and two thousand twenty-four. Both of those years she finished in sixteenth place. This year, Jocelyn finished ninth out of two hundred and thirty-six runners. Everyone in the top twenty-five are considered to be all-state runners. So what that means for Jocelyn is that she has earned all-state honors for three consecutive years. Jocelyn is our most accomplished cross-country runner in school history, and it's up for debate, but she might even be our most accomplished female athlete ever at Fenton. So Coach Frank Heckstat and Assistant Coach Giselle Garcia are here to share more about the girls.
Good evening, everybody. Hi, I'm Coach Giselle. I have been the Fenton Girls' Assistant Cross-Country Coach for seven years now. I'm also a Fenton alumni of Fenton High School, as well as the Girls' Cross-Country Program. It's really truly incredible to see what the program has evolved to and become under the leadership of Coach, where'd he go? Where'd he go? Oh. Under Frank Heckstat, his leadership and has just greatly evolved this program into one that most other schools admire and respect. And the work that these girls put in and what they did this past year was something truly incredible, and I was so happy to be a part of it. They all worked so hard and deserved every single accolade they get. So I'm extremely proud to have been a part of it. Extremely proud to have coached every single one of you and very excited that, well, we have three seniors leaving, but our team is very young, so I'm looking forward to the next couple of years to see what we can do. Thank you, guys.
Good evening. I would just like to say one thing, and that is thank you. But I would like to individually thank some people, starting with Sam Benson. Thank you for coming to Peoria. I believe it's the first time a Fenton superintendent made its way to the cross-country state championship meet, but thank you for being there. Your positive energy did have a wonderful effect.
Thank you, I enjoyed it very much, so thank you.
Kate Ward, thank you for coming to the sectional meet at Bison Country and witnessing history. I would like to also thank the Athletic Director, Pedro Rodriguez, and Mr. Cos for hosting both regionals and sectionals. It was a huge advantage for us to run on our home course in both of those championship races. I would like to also thank Laura Davies. She was the official for those meets. She's been a longtime supporter of Girls' Cross-Country and truly a legend. Wade's been chasing her in track records and cross-country records, and she's been very gracious and a huge supporter of the girls this year as well. I would like to thank the Boys' Cross-Country Team for our off-campus runs, keeping everyone safe, and their expertise was utilized with this team, and I am very thankful we couldn't have done it without you guys. And then finally, my assistant coaches. I have four outstanding assistant coaches, Coach Flores, Coach Lopez, Coach Mimi, and Coach Giselle. They're the example for the team to follow, powerful women and great character individuals that, you know, we couldn't have done it without them as well. And then, of course, finally, the team and the whole team, which is here. We all played a role, we all played a part in this great accomplishment. So thank you all, and parents as well, for raising wonderful daughters. Thank you.
We'll come up there.
All right, next we're going to recognize Junior Matthew Anderson. So if you can come up. Matthew Anderson is a rising star in the Boys' Cross-Country Team, which advanced as a group through regionals and competed together at sectionals. Matthew finished thirteenth out of a hundred and thirty-six runners at the sectional meet and earned a trip to the state finals in Peoria. Matthew sprinted into the scene last year when he took first place in the Froch-Sawf Race at the Kurtz Early Bird Invitational, which is an annual event that we host here at Fenton with more than twenty schools. So we're super excited to have Matthew back next year as a senior and can't wait to see the great success they're going to have in the future. Coach Patrick Fritsch is here to share a little bit more about Matthew.
I thank you, everyone. I'd like to first thank the Board for recognizing Matt. And then also, I'd like to thank the Fenton Administration for their support this season, allowing us to host the regional and sectional meet. You know, as Frank said in his comments, it was a great advantage for us to run on home course and to be able to go against some of the best competition in the state. But to be able to experience that and be able to control and understand how our race goes on and how the competition is going to unfold was a great advantage for us, so thank you there. I'd also like to thank my assistant coaches, Coach Jay Earhart and Coach Fabio Urzua. They put in a ton of effort to make this season very easy for me. As a coach, it's a lot, a lot easier when your assistant coaches are, you know, very active and, you know, really have a passion for being great, you know, helping your athletes achieve a lot. Onto Matt. Matt, this was his second year in a row being our number-one runner. His second year in a row being all-conference, and he also added all-regional, as well as state qualifying, to his repertoire. Not only that, he also took on the added responsibility of being a captain for our cross-country team this year. So, you know, I look forward to where he's going to grow and how he's going to run next year, and I just hope that, you know, his dedication and example will be a shining, you know, be able to hopefully inspire his teammates and others around him to excel and hopefully reach the state meet, and so we can join the girls as a team next year as well. Thank you again.
You're the coach up front.
Yeah.
All right, then we have one last recognition. This evening, we'd like to take a moment to recognize and thank our Superintendent, Dr. Sam Benson. In honor of Superintendent's Day, Sam's a dedicated leader who brings a lifetime of experience to work with us every single day. He's measured, thoughtful, and unwavering in his commitment to our students, staff, and community. We're deeply grateful for his steady hand, his vision, and his ability to bring people together. And of course, we appreciate his well-timed humor. Sam always knows just the right moment to crack a joke and lighten the room and has also been known to wear costumes on Spirit Day, which everyone always enjoys.
When's the next spirit?
Coming up soon. So thank you, Dr. Benson, for your leadership, your heart, and your ongoing service to Fenton. We are fortunate to have you.
Thank you.
Cameron, do we have any public comments tonight?
Yes, we do.
As a reminder, public comments are limited to three minutes per speaker, with a limit this evening of thirty minutes total. As a reminder, please address staff members and students by title and not by name to protect their privacy.
Carolina Herrera. Fatima Mendy. Xander Limon.
Hello, my name is Carolina Herrera.
Hello, my name is Fatima De La Torre.
And we're eleventh graders from Fenton High School, and we are writing this on behalf of the students of AP Psychology to share the results of our project, which is Sleepless in American High Schools, which examines the prevalence, causes, and consequences of insufficient sleep among students at Fenton High School. The primary reason we are here today is to discuss student's sleep in our school and to advocate for the well-being of our peers. We aim to provide actionable recommendations to improve students' well-being and academic performance and recognizing that this is a crucial aspect of their overall development. We can all admit that as humans, we often fail to achieve the recommended four hours of sleep. Perhaps we were preoccupied with work, had a long day, or you were kept up by your kids. According to a survey on the sleep practices of high school students issued by the CDC, which is the Centers for Disease Control, seventy percent of respondents reported sleeping fewer than seven hours per night. This data is tremendously below the advised eight to ten hours for adolescents. The majority reported feeling tired or unfocused during the first two morning courses, and almost half the students who replied to the survey disclosed having unintentionally fallen asleep during classes at least once in the past month. These habits are consistent with national data showing overall sleep deprivation among high school students. The effects of these sleep deficiencies are present in daily classroom life, including lessened attention, poorer test performance, irritability, and increased stress levels. In short, our students are attempting to learn in a biological state not conducive to learning. Understanding why students are so tired is essential for adults to learn how to offer a helping hand to the student. Nevertheless, first it requires examining the basic science of sleep. The sleep cycle, also understood as the circadian rhythm, is the body's internal clock. Its primary function is to regulate our alertness and sleepiness throughout the day. During adolescence, this cycle inherently shifts by two hours, meaning teens feel awake later at night and sleepy later in the morning. Early school start times causes students to wake up before their internal clocks are fully awake, which can lead to students to experience chronic sleep deprivation. Sleep pressure is a second system that is affected by sleep. It builds up as the person remains awake for extended periods of time. This pressure can only be relieved through sufficient sleep. When students stay up late, whether for homework, social media, or activities, and then wake up early for school, they may not recognize how this interrupts the natural homeostatic pressure that regulates their sleep. This leads them to begin each day in a state of psychological sleep deprivation. When this worsens, it will escalate over days or weeks, and students develop sleep debt, which is the shortfall of rest that the body requires. All of these essential details that are often ignored make up our sleep. This is vital for us to understand in order to have a healthier future. Contrary to the popular belief, this debt cannot be repaid simply by sleeping in on weekends. Cognitive and emotional performance remain impaired for days afterward. Our data reflected this reality. Students who slept fewer than seven hours per night reported greater mood changes and lower grades on average. Sleep deprivation also disrupts cortisol levels, the hormone central to the body's stress response. Typically, cortisol levels increase in the early morning to promote alertness and decline throughout the night. Insufficient or poor-quality sleep disrupts this rhythm, resulting in increased cortisol levels at night and lower levels in the morning. This such dysregulation not only increases stress and anxiety, but also weakens memory and emotional control in a person's learning. Lastly, sleep provides the restoration that the body and mind need to work correctly. During sleep, the brain unites memory, clears metabolic waste, and restores neural and hormonal conery. When students fail to receive adequate sleep, this restorative process is shortened, leaving them cognitively and emotionally exhausted the next day. These interacting mechanisms generate a range of educational and psychological issues among students. Students who start building up chronic sleep disorders demonstrate reduced attention span, slower reaction time, and diminished executive function compared to their well-rested classmates. Sleep-restricted adolescents are also more vulnerable to depression, irritability, and heightened risk-taking factors, behaviors. From a purely understanding perspective, students perform better, behave better, and feel more confident. Our findings confirm this. Students reporting eight or more hours of nightly sleep scored an average of six percentage points higher on cumulative exams than those sleeping six hours or fewer. Moreover, these well-rested students are reporting feeling more optimistic and less stressed, in accordance with pre-existing psychological literature on adequate sleep correlating with emotional resilience. Based on our analysis and review of the research, we respectfully propose the following actions for consideration. First, delay school start times. Schools starting before eight-thirty AM conflict with the circadian rhythm of adolescence. School districts that have moved their start times later reported improved attendance, better academic performance, and less tardiness. Second, implement sleep schedule, sleep education programs, including brief modules within health or advisory periods, teaching the science of sleep and explaining such terms as sleep pressure, sleep debt, and circadian rhythm. This may equip students with the knowledge about their own psychology. Third, review and extracurricular tons. Excessive late-night academic and athletic demands overlap with sleep time. Setting reasonable homework limits and discouraging late-evening practices would help students maintain a healthy sleep schedule. Lastly, create a culture of well-being. Encouraging teachers and administrators to model healthy sleep behaviors and avoid glorifying work, promoting an environment where rest is considered a foundation of productivity, not its opposite. Each of these measures is evidence-based and feasible with our current structure. These reforms might significantly improve student learning outcomes, mental health, and school climate if implemented. Sleep is not a luxury. It's a biological need for the restoration of our minds' cognitive, emotional, and physical resources. The scientific evidence, along with our local findings, suggests that our sleep, our schedule and culture consistently leave students exhausted, overstressed. By organizing our policies with adolescent behavior, we can create an environment where students are honestly engaged in learning. We would like to thank the Board for considering our findings and for welcoming the opportunity to present this research in person. Together, we can ensure our district supports both academic excellence and the well-being of each student. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Xander Lyman, and I'm here to tell you about the problems with teens and sleep. When people hear about teens being tired, they often think that they're just staying up too late, playing video games, or texting their friends. Well, this is the reason that some teens are always exhausted during the day. More often than not, teens really just aren't getting enough sleep. During the years thirteen through eighteen, the body goes, the body undergoes numerous physical and mental changes. All of these changes use a lot of energy. So while the average adult might be able to function normally off of just seven hours of sleep, according to John Hopkins Medicine, a renowned university that has made notable advancements in the medical field, the average teen should be getting closer to eight to ten hours per night. A major reason for this difficulty sleeping is the change in our circadian rhythm. The circadian rhythm operates as an internal clock for our bodies. It tells us when we should be awake and when we should be asleep. Something that most people don't know is that adults and adolescents have different circadian rhythms. So during the teenage years is when those cycles start to change. This causes abnormal times in which the teens' bodies will start to feel tired. For example, while an adult might have no problem falling asleep before ten PM, teens often struggle to fall asleep before eleven PM and still wake up early in the morning. Because of this, social demands such as school every morning at eight AM become much more difficult as the body is running on insufficient sleep. Another aspect of teens not getting enough sleep is the hormone melatonin. Most people don't, most people know melatonin as a supplement to help people sleep, but it's also a hormone that your body secretes during the later hours of the day to help you feel tired. The difference between melatonin in adults and melatonin in teens is that it doesn't release into the body until later at night in teens. Compared, according to a young, according to a study done by PubMed Central, a government-funded medical database, a delayed secretion of melatonin usually coincides with puberty changes. Because of this delayed secretion, even if a teenager tries to go to bed at what society calls a reasonable hour, their bodies might not be ready to sleep yet. Over time, this lack of sleep builds up to create something called sleep debt. Sleep debt is the difference between how much sleep a person needs and how much sleep they're actually getting. Just like any other form of debt, nobody wants sleep debt. Over time, this continued lack of sleep or accumulation of sleep debt can cause issues with cognitive performance, physical health, and the overall mood of the team. The negative impacts are shown by a survey that was given to the student body of Fenton. A majority of the students reported getting between five and seven hours of sleep on school nights, which is below the recommended eight to ten hours per night. Most students reported drinking a caffeinated drink multiple times per week. The data also showed that students who consumed the most caffeine were the same ones who felt most tired the next morning, suggesting that while caffeine might help them feel more awake for a few hours, it disrupts their sleep, leaving them feeling even worse the next day. While some people, while some people might think that lying in bed, scrolling through TikTok, or just relaxing in your bed while reading a book has similar effects to a good night's sleep, they're nowhere near as effective as actual rest. Sleep is a time when your body performs important tasks, such as memory consolidation and restoration of resources. Memory consolidation is the process of your brain converting your short-term memories into more-lasting, long-term memories. When this doesn't happen properly, people will struggle to remember things over long periods of time. Restoration of resources is your body hitting, is sort of your body hitting the reset button. It's when your mind resets its stress levels, attention levels, and helps replenish energy. If this process is not carried out fully due to insufficient sleep, it can cause someone to feel more stressed, less focused, and more sluggish the next day. These are just two of the many processes that your body performs while you're sleeping. Many other essential fact, many other essential factors require a good night's rest. If a teen's body doesn't go through these processes every night, it could lead to a variety of different problems in their classes. In conclusion, sleep is not something that teens should treat as an option. It's something that all teens need in order to function properly during school. And while it is the teens' job to make sure they're doing their best to go to sleep at a reasonable time each night, schools can assist in this by lessening the amount of homework that students have each night, starting the school day later, or assigning more work that needs to be done on paper compared to the work on our Chromebooks that require us to stare at a bright screen all day. Parents can also assist by influencing their children. Parents can also assist by influencing their child to get to sleep earlier, doing their best to align schedules as to not disturb their child while sleeping, and making sure their home life is stress-free as possible. By doing these simple things, we can support the mental health, learning ability, and overall well-being of teens. Thank you.
Candace Garcia?
Good evening. I'm Candace Garcia, alum from here. My son just graduated this past year and homeowner here in Bensonville. And I'm here today regarding the contract with Flock for the automatic license plate readers. I foiled for the emails. I'm also a researcher with Lucy Parsons Lab nonprofit. I foiled the research in emails and documentation that you guys have regarding the ALPRs before you made the decision. I'm not too pleased. Most of correspondence went with interim superintendent Figueroa and the school resource officer. The sales rep for Flock was very persistent, quite obnoxious, and predatory, might I add. I seen some correspondence in email. I didn't get any documentation as far as how that information is going to be used moving forward, but I know a lot about Flock. And we're doing more to expose the children than to protect them by adding ALPRs around the school. The meeting I did view stated that, well, we're going to add these cameras because, didn't state what type of cameras, but the school's expanding, we're doing construction, we simply need more cameras. So then I backtracked it. The email said, well, there's some concerns about how this information will be shared across the country, because that's how it's shared. So I'll get back to you, ALPR sales guy, after the next meeting. So then I backtracked to the previous meeting, but I don't get to see those concerns. But what I do see is you have seventy percent Latino population here at the school. It's a bad idea. The contract's two years. I'm asking you to cancel it. I haven't had a lot of time to look at the information, but I will. And I'll be asking for more information through Freedom of Information Act. Do your students know that you're tracking their license plates in and out of the school regularly? Do the parents know you're tracking their license plates in and out of the school regularly? And that that information can be shared throughout the entire country, given the status with ICE and Border Patrol? It's an awful idea. So I'm just asking you to rescind the contract and certainly not renew it, and make your students and your parent population aware. And I think I'll leave it at that.
Thank you for your comments. Our next item is informational. Sam?
Yes, we're going to start. As you can see, we have a wide variety of topics tonight. We're going to kick it off with the Illinois School Report Card and then a variety of different financial topics. So Kate, let me kick it off.
All right. I'll start us off with the School Report Card. So every year on October 31st, the Illinois State Board publishes the Illinois School Report Card for each school in the state. And you can go on and see any school's report card on illinoisreportcard.com, and there's tons of information about every school. But overall, kind of the highlights of the report card is this index score. So if you take a look at the house there, each school is, there's eight different areas that each school is kind of rated in, so you get an index score, and then it is weighted. So the areas that high schools are judged in is different than the criteria that you have for grade schools. So we're going to go through a lot of these metrics, but one of the things I want to point out to you is that there's a lot of information up here. One of the most, I think, one of the greatest things about this is you can really see the changes in your own school. And so what you'll see on each slide, at least to start with, is our current score, which is there in the green. So this year is seventy-three point one, and then up in the corner is what last year's score was, so that you can see the changes. So again, this year, as we have been in the past, Fenton is a commendable school, and we did earn that score of seventy-three point one, which is up from last year's score of sixty-four point nine four. So just a little bit more. Here are the different accountability indicators that each high school is tracked in. So you can see those there. And then you can also see the weight that is given to each one of those indicators. And then overall, it is converted to that index score, one to a hundred. In order to be a commendable school, that means you're not in the top ten percent, which that means those schools are called exemplary, which that is always what we're trying to be. A commendable school is below that, but it also means that you're not a targeted school, which a targeted school means that you have some student groups that are performing, or at least one student group that's performing in the lowest five percent of all schools. It also allows you to take a look at your targeted student groups, which that's great because you can see your overall score, but then you can also look at subgroups to see how your subgroups are also performing. So at Fenton, the six subgroups that are our targeted student groups, you can see them listed there, and we'll take a look at how those groups scored also. So again, here you can see this is our overall index score, and where Fenton falls on the continuum. You can see the exemplary is at ninety-three and targeted is down there, but we're really excited to see that we had growth from sixty-four point nine four to seventy-three point eleven. And then here's where we get into our targeted groups. So our low-income students, they're actually pretty close to our overall score, a little bit lower, at sixty-seven point three six. But again, when we look at that, we did see growth from last year. Our white students at eighty-four point six eight this year. Again, a nice growth from last year that we can see. Our Hispanic and Latino students, sixty-eight point oh eight. Nice jump that we see there from last year. And again, a little bit lower than our overall score, but really within range. So that's, you know, something that we are always examining. These are English language learners, which at Fenton, as we've talked about a lot in the past, we have a very complex makeup of English language learners. We have many students that are newcomers who have been here for less than three years, but we also have English language learners who are lifelong English language learners. So this is an area that we are spending a lot of time making sure with professional development, making sure with teacher certification. You probably remember, we talked about our initiative that we've been working on EL for All to make sure that all of our teachers understand best practices around English language learners. So we see that their index score is thirty-seven point two, but again, we're seeing growth, a lot of growth there. Our students with disabilities remained pretty flat from last year. One of the things that we always have to keep in mind at Fenton about our students with disabilities is that many of them also are English language learners. So we're not only making sure that we're serving whatever their diverse learning need is, but also their language needs. Not all of them, but a high percentage of our students have both of those qualifications. Here's one that is really impressive. These are our former English language learners. So this would be any student who qualified for EL services and would have passed out. It could have been in grade school, it could have been in high school, but students who passed and showed proficiency in the English language, they're actually our highest-performing group. And again, we've seen really great growth. So our former English language learners are really exceeding expectations, doing a great job. Okay, now this is a, I'm going to give you a second to take this in, and let me explain it a little bit. But here are some of the metrics, right? And the way we wanted to show this was that, so you can see the trends over time. So if you look up in the right corner, anything that you see over there in blue, that's the state average, so that you can see Fenton measured against the state average, and then also our trends over time. The red line indicates the COVID year, where there was not data for that year, and we also know that since COVID, that has been kind of a line of demarcation where many things changed in education. So again, I think some things to point out. Our percentage of IEP, or Students with Exceptional Needs, is on trend. You know, it's kind of remained stable, but where we've really seen a tremendous amount of change in our population is our English language learners, right? And you can see how that number has gone up tremendously and greatly outpaces the rate in the state. Kind of an anomaly that we're looking at is low income. So it looks like this year we had a dip in low income. We don't actually think that's accurate. We actually know it's not accurate. One of the things, we are lucky enough to be a part of the school lunch program where all of our students get free lunch. And so because of that, students don't need to fill out the waivers anymore, and so that's an under-reported number. We're working hard this year to make sure that those numbers, we're getting students to fill those forms out, and their parents to fill those forms out. In the past, it was, you know, the free lunch was what you got out of that, so there was much more motivation or need for them to fill it out. So we're looking for ways to make sure. So our guess is that we are probably still close to that fifty-eight percent, but that, you know, it's the inclusion of that free lunch program from, that started last year. You can see our homeless numbers, again, still growing, outpacing the state, and then our class size. I'm going to turn it over to Steph to talk a little bit about the test score metrics.
That is the one. Okay, so the first thing is our EL exit rate. That was an area of an improvement for us last year. We had thirteen students who exited last year. That's the best we've done in the last four years. We are going to continue with a major change that we implemented last year, and the change was that we tested the students in one sitting. So they took the access test in one sitting instead of over the course of several days in different portions. We think that that made a pretty big difference. They had a special testing session during what we called Future Ready Fenton Day, and we think that that had a very positive impact on the results. So that planning is underway for February 5th, and we are going to continue with that practice. So then the rest of the scores, we almost need like a second, like thick line there because between the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four numbers to the right, that is all SAT data. So it's the kids taking the SAT. Last year, they took the ACT for the first time. So we're in a position right now where we are not comparing apples to apples for this last year. The ELA and math proficiency numbers have changed in two ways, and at the same time. So we're looking at baseline data right now, basically. Our proficiency rate is based on the ACT exam, but also, over the summer, ISBE released what they're calling their Right-Sized Realigned College Readiness Standards. And basically what that means is, we've always used the test company's college readiness standards to measure proficiency, and the state of Illinois is saying we are not going to be using ACT's standards anymore. We are using ISBE's college readiness standards. And it's based on a lot of research that they've done over the past few years. I have a lot of information about it, so if you want to have a conversation, I do know kind of a lot about it. There was a long, long webinar that I was a part of. But they think that this is the right thing to do in order to help, honestly, schools like Fenton. So it's really two separate things happening here. We've got different readiness standards, and we've got a different test. So the other thing then means that this data here is a reflection and a change in policy and not student performance. So you really can't look at it as like a jump in student performance because that is not what it's reflecting. The one, well, another thing too. So with science, a noteworthy item is that science was always based on the Illinois State Science Assessment, so it was an Illinois state test. Now it's based on the ACT portion that is science test. They're two completely different tests. So the Illinois Science Test was a state test based on science content. Now they're taking the ACT, which is focused more on applied science, and it's heavily reliant on timed reading. So it's a big difference in testing. Next year, we're going to have a much better picture of progress. We'll have the two data points we need with the same test and the same benchmarks, and then we can measure growth, which is really like the best way to look at student test data. So I don't know if there are any questions about that at the moment.
So going on to the next slide, one of the things that I think we're proud of and excited about is like the tests, you know, the state changing the tests that, you know, Steph just really explained how there are shortcomings with that for measuring, you know, our student performance. But one of the things that I feel really good about is the things that we can control, we're seeing the growth there. So like, for instance, our ninth grade on track, I think if you look at those numbers, so this is something that we have really focused on over the past couple of years, and I've shared with you a lot of the different supports and interventions that we've put in place for our ninth graders, things like academic math literacy. As a support class, Bison Orange is an executive functioning class. We're working hard on the transition from eighth grade to freshman year, because we know that when our students come in and have a strong freshman year, that that carries out in their four years, and I think you can see that in our ninth grade on track. We're having a lot of success there and outpacing the state. Also, you can see our graduation rate continues to be on track. This is a little bit confusing because we have our four-year, five-year. Obviously, the vast majority of our students graduate in four years, but there are reasons, sometimes because they have exceptional needs, or sometimes, you know, they just don't pass in four years. So you can see, it's a much smaller percentage of students that would have a five-year or six-year rate. But again, all of those graduation rates are on track or right there with the state, so we're happy to see that. And my anticipation is that as our ninth grade on track increases, that we will see that continue. So that's really exciting. And then the last one is focusing a lot on our attendance. So you can see that our attendance rate is continuing to improve. Our chronic absenteeism and our truancy is continuing to decrease, which that's the one area we do want to see a decrease. You know, as we've talked a lot about absenteeism, that's something that has been a lot of our messaging, and a lot of our efforts are going into that. So we're seeing it decrease, and we're going to continue working on that. We can see probably the biggest decrease there with chronic truancy, and we have done a lot of messaging. Kind of the first step there is making sure that our parents and communities know how to properly report attendance. So that's a huge decrease that we don't have students that are unexcused, or we have fewer students. So now that we have that, we're really continuing to focus with that chronic absenteeism. We're partnering with the ROE. We have an attendance specialist who's with us three days a week, and then with District Two, two days a week. And so we're doing a lot of work there, and we're already seeing success this year, so I'm excited to see next year's data when we get to that point. So again, I invite you to go on to the website because there's lots and lots of information. This is just an overview, but I think it shows that in so many different ways, we are making growth from previous years. There are some areas that we need to continue to focus on. Obviously, our EL students, our students with disabilities, we know those supports, you know, we need to continue, but we're seeing growth in all of those areas. Any questions?
Okay, next we have our financial audit presentation. We go back a slide. Our auditor's been very patient, so we don't want to skip his slide. But anyway, he does have, in your binder, is this related to the audit, so feel free to follow along.
As you're getting that information out, just before I'll introduce Mr. McKay Thorpe here, but this is in accordance with Illinois School Code, the school districts across the state have to annually undergo a financial audit conducted by an outside agency. And Mr. McKay Thorpe, as the audit manager of Lauderbach and Amen, will present the audit findings to you tonight.
Awesome. Thanks, Doug. Thank you Superintendent Benson. Yeah, so my name is McKay Thorpe. I heard you guys have a lot on your docket, so I'll make my FastPass presentation even faster. Another successful, clean audit, as expected, and that's only thanks to Doug, Vanessa, and Maggie, of all the hard work that they put in throughout the whole entire year, that where the district received on their ISBAFR a three-point-nine score, which is out of four, where four is the highest. So what ISBE does is, we put in all the financial numbers. ISBE looks at analysis, where it looks to see cash for expenses, compares your long-term debt, takes all those into account, and gives you a score, which the school district received a three-point-nine score. So that's awesome to see. So we'll start with the big packet, and we'll go to page number one. So this is the most important page of the audit report. This is your audit opinion for fiscal year 6/30/2025, which the district, once again, received a modified cash basis opinion. This is consistent with the prior years, so congratulations again on receiving the opinion. So I'm not going to go through too much of the booklet. Like I said, I know you guys have a lot to get through, so if there's any questions when you go through it, Doug has my email, so please feel free to reach out. I did just want to bring your attention, and this is kind of going to go in part with Doug's presentation that he has later on this evening. If you flip to page eighty-nine in the far back. All right, so you're going to see it says combining balance sheet, it has the transportation, debt service, and fire prevention and safety. So the transportation, on page eighty-nine is balance sheet, page ninety is income statement. You'll see that the fund balance for transportation is getting quite low. And if you look at, and then flip to page eighty-seven, which is your IMRE. And if you look at, and then flip to page 87, which is your IMRF and social security. You'll see the opposite, that the fund balance is growing and is almost more than the expenditures. So Doug brought this, you know, Doug brought this up, I think, the first day that we were there onsite. I think it was also his third day hired by the district. So, so Doug and I have been working together. Doug's been presenting us with ideas and we discussed the property tax levy steps that he looked into to kind of help build up the transportation fund by using the property tax levy to the school district's advantage there. So just wanted to make the board aware that Doug did the right thing in calling the auditors right. It's always nice having a third set of eyes and outside eyes to kind of take a look at things and see if it makes sense. And so I just kind of wanted to kind of help show that up. So when Doug does his presentation, you can see that the audit reflects his findings as well. Then you'll also see in the smaller packet, which is titled Management Letter. There's a best practice comment for funds not in compliance with fund balance policy. Which last year, the transportation fund was in there and the transportation fund is in there as well as this year. So once again, that backs up that there are steps that need to be taken just to kind of help build up the fund balance policy and transportation going forward. So like I said, I know it's kind of a quick one because I know you guys have a lot going on. But overall, great, clean audit. You have a wonderful staff and you have a great leader in Doug for future years to come. So thank you again, and I know it's a school night, so don't stay up too late. Also, if there's any questions, sorry.
I think you have one. But this is capital asset policy. Yeah, prior recommendations. I remember a couple of these coming up, outstanding checks.
Yep.
That knows how old they really are. For my background, these should be pretty straightforward things to get a grip on. I got to be fair to Dr. Wilder because he's in care of these problems. And I'd ask criticism about asset policy a couple of years ago. But do we have these wrapped up by next year?
Yeah, we have templates that we can share with Doug. Doug and I have, we've, we've talked about these before. So now that this year's audit's done, we can kind of, Doug can put them together, send over to us, give a quick little glance and, and work with the board, so.
I did, oh, this is press concerned over these.
Luckily, they're not too in-depth policies, so you're in great hands with Doug here. Go. Awesome. Guys, have a, a great night.
Thank you very much. Okay, next slide.
All right, good evening, Board. This is for all of us CSBOs in, throughout the state, November, December is sort of our Super Bowl as we are preparing the, the tax levy, some of the most exciting things that, that we do in the business office. So for, for me, part of Illinois School Code, I'll, I'll go through all of this as well, is providing the board prior to the board's adoption of the tax levy for the school district. We go through an estimated tax levy. With this presentation, I'll give a, an overview of the process itself. Again, thinking through this, making sure all of you as board members, when you, you go to the grocery store or if somebody asks you a question about their property taxes, you have a, a solid working knowledge of where the school district takes, plays a part in that. We'll take a look at some of our historical as well as comparative data with us, other school districts in our area. And then also we'll, we'll finish off with kind of what goes into the, the estimated property tax levy for, for this school year. So as I mentioned earlier, this is a part of Illinois School Code that we are to provide an estimated tax levy at least 20 days prior to its adoption. So tonight serves that first purpose. And then secondly, by the end of the last Tuesday in December, which is December 30th, we must present and adopt a tax levy for approval and our board meeting is December 17th. And again, that will be the, the day that we will hopefully adopt the tax levy. Then I take care of that and send it off to, to the county and to the state. This slide is just a, there's a lot here, but visually, there are many things that go into your property taxes at home. The levy itself, these red circles are where the school district plays a, a small role. All of the taxing bodies within the county are working on their levies, preparing their levy, similar to what we're doing here as a school district. The county, the, the town assessors, the township assessors are evaluating the property value of everybody in their township and throughout the county. The, you're hearing tax appeals and things like that. You've got your county clerks are, are trying to navigate, developing a tax rate, how they're going to determine what your overall taxes are. Your county treasurers are, are issuing and collecting tax bills. So we play one small part in the, the tax, the tax process here within the county. A couple of key vocab terms here, again, I'll try to go through these quickly. An EAV, this is something, when you look at your property tax bill, you'll have your market value. The entire township of the Addison Township, which we're a part of, one of the nine townships in DuPage County. We have an EAV, an equalized assessed value of all the property. It's north of $1.6 billion in, in the Addison Township. Tax extension is what you are actually given. And then it's paid out in multiple payments, approximately 10 payments, starting in May of the next fiscal year and going through December. The levy is the ask, that's what we're doing tonight. And then a tax rate is based upon something, again, you'd see in your property tax bill. It's the, the ask or the extension, I'm sorry, divided by the total township's EAV is how you determine your, your tax, tax rate. Again, just a visual here, there's a difference between the levy and the extension. The levy visually is what we as a municipality ask for. And then the extension is the taxes that are given based upon all of the, again, other factors that go into this. EAV, CPI, and what, what the, the county assessors and, and county clerks determine what they can give away in, in terms of each, each municipality's ask.
I don't think we had this kind of presentation last year.
You did not. Okay, you did not. This is a, a lot of information here, but I wanted to go into just a little bit more of things to consider when, when I'm preparing the levy or when any other CSBO is comparing, preparing the levy. What are your expected or anticipated expenditures? Salaries, benefits, those are usually the, the biggest drivers. Supplies, equipment purchases that, that you're anticipating for that upcoming year. Transportation costs, of, of building projects, facility improvements, et cetera. Those are the things that you predict or trying to guess or anticipate as expenditures for that upcoming, that upcoming year. Next, where do your revenues come from? Presented this earlier in, in July. Over 75% of our revenues come from local property taxes. We have about a little over 6% comes from state sources, reimbursements, grants. Same thing with federal, just under 4%. And then about 14% comes from other sources, CPPRT, interest earnings, student fees, et cetera. So expenditures, revenues, and then we also have, we are in what's called a PTEL or a Property Tax Extension Limitation County or a, a tax cap county. So with that, there, you cannot go above 5% or CPI from the previous December, whichever is lower. So last December, our CPI was 2.9%. So for us, we can ask up to 5%, that we can levy up to 5%. Realistically, we will only be extended about 2.9%. The last previous two years, we have gone above 5% on our levy request. That requires what's called a truth in taxation. So you can ask for more than 5%, you just have to do something called a truth in taxation. You have to provide a rationale for that. The last couple of years, the rationale was due to CPI being beyond 5%. Anticipated expenditures, et cetera, et cetera. That's why we went above, we requested levy request, the levy request was above 5%.
Quickly, so the, the, this, if we levy beyond 5%, then we're required to have the subsequent meeting where you have, we have another meeting and allow people to make comments and stuff like that.
Correct.
If we, if we levy below 5%, we don't have to have the meeting. Or the, you're not, you don't have to have the subsequent public meeting to explain levy.
Correct.
But you're only going to get 2.9 anyway.
Correct.
At best.
I'll explain that a little, we'll get 2.9 plus new construction.
Yeah, yeah, plus some legal room, whatever.
Yep.
Okay.
EAV adjustments and, and new construction.
Sure.
So I'll, but yes. In, from, from this presentation, kind of skipping to the end, we will not be asking above 5%.
Okay.
Due to our expenditures, our revenues, et cetera. So we do not need to do a truth in taxation.
Okay.
This is just a visual to show, one of the, the, certainly as all of us are homeowners, the, the people who are homeowners and property taxpayers in, in DuPage County and throughout the state. This visual just shows the, the significant amount of money that goes to education schools in DuPage County. And similar, that pie looks, looks like that throughout the state. But in DuPage County, almost 75% of all of the property taxes collected get distributed to the schools. And again, I had mentioned this before, Addison, we're in Addison Township, we're one of the nine townships within DuPage County. So when you see our revenues and our levy requests, they're very, they very much mirror the distribution of, of taxes to schools in, in the rest of the county. Another part of the process, what can you levy for? You can levy for various groups, education, bonded interest. We have a couple of bonds for the, the front entrance in 2015 and 2016. You can levy for IMRF and social security. You can levy for working cash, it's sort of a rainy day fund. Transportation, O and M. If you do go out to referendum, you have a limited and a non-limited bonded interest. So many school districts who go the, the referendum route, that's a separate levy, fire safety tort, et cetera. One thing you cannot levy for is capital projects. That's, that goes through referendum.
Yeah, and I, I learn more about this every year, so you'll, just if you help me out here for a minute. So these are all the things you can levy for, but you're still not going to get more than 2.9% overall.
Correct. And some school districts, realistically, some school districts levy in each of these groups. Some school districts levy in only a handful. It's based upon how they determine their expenditures and how they want to, you know, divvy up their spending. Now we're into some of the historical information, a lot of data here. I have the past five years of CPI, so you can see, again, going back to that previous conversation about truth in taxation. We had gone to truth in taxation a couple of years, for a couple of years in a row, due to those high CPI rates. So to try to capture as much new money and, and, and tax extensions as possible, we went above the, the 5%. You can see the EAV, this is the, the value of, of the, the properties in the Addison Township, $1.6 billion. And you can see the EAV change over time. So the value of property over the last five years is going up over 5% year over year. So you're seeing that reflected in your, if you are on Redfin or Zillow or you see that in your property. Your, your house goes up 5%, 6% on average year over year. That also plays a part in, in your property tax allocation. Our tax rate within the school district here, year over year as well. So this is the, our extension divided by the EAV determines our tax rate. That column in the middle, the tax impact on a $300,000 home. If you built a brand-new home in 2024 that was valued at $300,000, of the taxes that, that you were extended or you had to pay, just under 1,800 went to Fenton. The next column, sort of trying to visually explain this. If you built a new home in 2023 at $300,000, you, 1,850 went to the school. That's, that same property in 2024 went up 8.4%. So then that, that extension of, went from $1,850 to $1,954 or a $103 increase. So the far right column is sort of the, the indicator of what is the, the increase impact on a taxpayer year over year historically. We've been averaging about a $90 increase for a $300,000 home year over year due to the, the EAV increase, the CPI changes, and then our levy requests. Another comparable is just showing our school district compared to the other seven high school. There are seven high schools in DuPage County. Our tax rate, you can see that we're right in the middle. There are certainly some school districts that their tax rate is higher than, than ours. Additionally, our two elementary districts are also listed below. Again, our tax rate at Fenton is relatively low compared to, to District Two and District Seven. There are a lot of factors, again, that go into that. EAVs, there's a major TIF in Bensonville that is a very significant reduction of their EAV. So Bensonville has a, a little bit of a slight disadvantage to Wooddale. Both do have TIFs, but, but Bensonville has a, a very significant multiple hundred million dollar TIF that, that they're not capturing any taxes on. So just wanted to show you, as a, as a, as a board member, we are in a very comparable tax rate to other high school districts in DuPage County. This is our, this is what our extent, our levy and our extension looked like last year. So again, those various groups, education, bond and interest, operation, maintenance, IMRF, transportation, special education, social security, and then aggregate refunds are the, the, the groups that we levied in last year, the rates associated, and then what we are actually given or that extension. So we're given slightly less than what we asked for. This is to show the previous five years and then what we're anticipating this year. The blue column is our levy, our ask, and the orange is what we were given, our extension. We've, over the past five years, Bruce and, and now myself, we're trying to levy a little bit more than what we're expecting to get in an extension. But we're not trying to do something where we're levying a ridiculous amount of money that we, we know we wouldn't get. So we're, we're trying to do this as, as fair and appropriate as possible. Bruce and, and I are hoping to be, Bruce was within about 90, 98% where he'd get the extension compared to levy. That's my hope as well, is that I'm, I'm levying slightly more than what I anticipate we'll get. The downside is if you under levy, you don't capture as much as you, you possibly can, which has detrimental effects down the road. Because you, once, whatever you've been extended, you can never levy more than 5%. So that's always, the unfortunate game in, in the state of Illinois and how this works is you want to try to levy as much as possible year over year, understanding the negative consequence to a taxpayer. But there is a significant consequence to the municipality if they under levy because that sets them back year over year due to the, the levy, the, the limit rates in places like, like our school district and, or our county with the PTEL tax cap. So getting into the nuts and bolts of this year's levy, again, CPI is at 2.9%. The EAV, with talking with the county clerk, the EAV is estimated to increase this year by 6.5%. So again, whatever your home value was this last year, you can anticipate your home value increasing about 6.5% next year. There's about 6.5 million in new construction throughout Wooddale and Bensonville outside of the TIF areas. A couple of other places, our education. Um, a couple of other places, our education fund, our salaries and benefits will exceed CPI increases next year. Our O and M fund, uh, we've obviously had some conversations about needs to continue to improve and focus on facility improvement. As uh, Mr. Thorpe had indicated, our transportation fund is below board policy of 15 percent fund balance to, to um, expenditure and revenue ratios. And our IMRF social security is above board policy, actually well above board policy. Um, so these sort of things factored into um, my tax levy preparation. There's a lot of information here. Um, the column on the left-hand side of is each of the funds. The 24 tax extension is the second to the left. That is again, what we received this last year uh, in terms of extensions. The column in the middle is where my levy requests are. And then what I'm anticipating, what we will receive in terms of extensions. Now that is again, an estimate. It's a guess based upon all these um, various factors that I, that I had mentioned earlier. A couple of key points. Um, in the education fund, we have a, it's a 4.6 percent increase of levy money in that fund to try to cover the anticipated 5 percent salary increases and 3 percent increases of, of things like accounts payable. Operations and maintenance, it's a 6.2 percent increase there due to anticipated operations and maintenance costs. Again, hopefully, um, when we get to this later down the, the, the school year and we start preparing our budget, we hopefully can allocate some money for facility improvements. Transportation, as you can see, is a, a significant increase. It's a, nearly $400,000 more than what we were extended the year before, almost a 25 percent increase. As you have seen this year over year, Bruce used to move uh, working cash to pay the, the um, the fund balances, the, the underfunded transportation budget. I'd like to try to start moving more money into transportation to increase that fund balance. So we're not continuously moving working cash into transportation. IMRF and social security, uh, as Mr. Thorpe had, had indicated, we have plenty of money in that fund. I prefer not to levy anything in there for at least this year, maybe even two. Because we still have bills to pay out of there, but we have plenty of money in there. I'd rather allocate it to transportation, O and M, et cetera. And then special education, looking at a, a 4 percent increase there, um, due to typical special education increases. So the total levy request, if you take a look over, over to the far right side, again, we have a 2.9 um CPI, but with EAV and new construction, we're anticipating the extension to be about 3.4, 3.45 percent. Um, so the overall levy request is a 4.7 percent increase. So I'm hoping to be within that, that as uh, Bruce has historically been, in that 98.5 percent. I'm not in, expecting us to get that full 4.7 percent increase, but I'm hoping to be somewhere uh, close to that 3.45 of, of that extension. If, when, after this presentation and we um, as a, as a board approve the estimated tax levy, this would be what the levy, it's a one-page document next month. It's a one, and this would be exactly the, the requests. 27.9 in ed, little over three in operations, 1.87 in transportation, 420,000 in special education, and the bonded interest is a dollar amount to pay back our principal and interest from the 2015, 2016 um, bonds, totaling just under 34 million. So again, just tying back, again, trying to get, give you that, that grocery store conversation. If you have a $300,000 home in Wooddale or Bensonville this last year, it costs about $1,800 of, of that property tax money went to Fenton High School. That same house next year will be valued at just under 320,000. Uh, with our, our levy and the anticipated extension, it would be about a $1,850 property tax uh, extension or distribution to the school district, which is a $60 increase. The, the last point here is, this is about $45 less of an increase than it was last year. And historically, this is about $30 less than the average over the last five years of the increase or the impact on the taxpayer. So it is certainly an increase, but it's less of an increase than it has been historically year over year for the, for the past few. Um, and then next steps, if the board approves our tax levy, as I said earlier, we will then bring this to the December 17th uh, board meeting for approval. And if it is approved, I file with the DuPage County Clerk's Office um, essentially the next day. Any questions? I'm keeping the clicker here. I'm keeping the clicker here. This is again, one of, a part of Illinois School Code. What we are supposed to do, again, this ties into our audit, ties into our levy. We are, we are to present to the school board what's called the Operational Funds Expenditure Report, and if needed, a reserve reduction plan. Um, it, it went into effect a calendar year ago. What you're supposed to do is look at what are called your operating funds, the education, O and M, and transportation fund. What are your annual expenditures year over year for the past three years? Come up with an average of those expenditures. Look at your fund balances um, for those operating funds. And if your fund balances exceed 250 percent of the average of the spending for the last three years, you have to do a reserve reduction plan. Essentially, that's to try to keep school districts and other municipalities from hoarding money from taxpayers and not using it. We are certainly well below that. Uh, we're at, at 56 percent. Which again, we do have board policies and as Mr. Thorpe alluded to, a part of our, our four, our nearly four rating is because we have fund balances that are north of, of, of the, the goal of somewhere around that 40 percent fund balance. So we're just north of that. That's how you get an ISB rating of a four. Uh, when you dip below that 40 percent is when you start getting into three, et cetera. But we have a board policy of 15 percent. So we do not need to do a reserve reduction plan. This is just something, again, that we're trying to be transparent, trying to be open and, and um, good stewards of taxpayer dollars, making sure people know that we're, we're not just sitting on, on their, their hard-earned um, taxpayer money. Um, this last document is also a part of school board policy or a, a school code. Um, as a school district, we, we work on trying to do the best we can with shared services. There are continuous ways to, to improve this. Um, but this document is a part of the annual audit where the auditors look at where are places we can try to share services. We can um, do some sort of cooperations and co-ops and things like that. So with uh, things like curriculum development, we work with District Two, District Seven. Um, with uh, insurance, we're a part of the Educational Benefits Cooperation and, and CLIC. Um, we, we're a part of an Illinois Gas uh, Cooperative to try to get the best rates we can on natural gas, electricity. There are some other ideas that, that hopefully a future board meeting, I'll present to you on, on ways that we continue, continue to improve there. We are financially, we're a part of an investment pool uh, called IS, um, Illinois School District Asset Fund. ISLAF uh, is the acronym. Uh, we love acronyms. You see a part of that every, every month in the treasurer's report, that we're a part of that. And the list goes on and on here, where we're trying to do the best we can, where we can consolidate and we can share services. This is just showing that, um, of course, there are always other places we can go and we'll continue to look at. Uh, but this is again, part of school code, just to showcase this.
Okay, Jose?
Yes, uh, so we did have um, some FOIAs this, this, this past month. Uh, the first one, the data branch, um, asked for records that reflect purchasing activity by all departments, divisions, offices, and programs. So that was resolved. Uh, the Lucy Parsons Lab had five. Um, they were broken down. Due to the first one being, uh, it was denied due to the, the voluminous request. So quite a few of those were also denied. Um, I believe you got, you guys have that information as well in your packet, but only one of the, of the five was partially uh, resolved. So the majority were denied due to the fact that the majority of them, we, we did not have the information requested.
Okay, and then tonight, under other, we could go back to other. Thank you. Just a real quick update, the board's been hard at work looking for the new superintendent uh, for next school year. Six candidates were interviewed on Saturday, November the 15th, and through that process, it was narrowed down to two finalists. The dates are Wednesday, December the 3rd, and Thursday, December the 4th. And O'Kearney was check, touched base with all the board members and those dates are working. As far as a, a venue, that hasn't been determined yet. So more to come on that. We're still looking at that.
Can I have a?
Yeah.
Uh, one thing I wanted to add, I, I apologize, uh, Mr. Lewis, uh, for the, for the personnel report, we did add Mr. Tom Cantlin's um, administrative contract for the FMLA leave that he would potentially cover with your approval um, in the spring semester. Um, so that is in your, in your um, packet? Yes, sir. Um, so I just wanted to bring that to your attention. I apologize for that oversight. It was not included in the packet um, on Friday, but it is in your packet now, so.
So he is listed in the personnel report as a hiring, but this is the actual FMLA contract?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Next item is our consent agenda. Can I have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Radzinski?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McCullough?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Epstein.
Figaro?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes, motion passed. May I have a motion that the Board of Education accepts the 2024, 2025 audited financial statements as submitted by Lotte Bach and Amon LLP as presented? Any discussion? Roll call.
McCullough?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Figaro?
Yes.
Radzinski?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes, motion passed. May I have a motion that the Board of Education accepts the 2025 estimated tax levy as presented in preparation for the final tax levy to be adopted at the December 17th regular board meeting?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I'd like to make a comment. Given the nature of taxation in our community, it's unsustainable to continue to ask residents to um, contribute at the levels that they are. Additionally, another taxing body has added taxes to uh, residents just recently this past week. For that reason, um, I think it's very challenging to want to support any additional tax levies at this time. And I'll also add that I, I do maintain that there are opportunities for savings here at Fenton given the nature of the top-heavy administrative structure that we have.
Roll call.
Miller?
Yes.
Radzinski?
Yes.
Figaroa?
Yes.
McCullough?
No.
Goodrich?
No.
Lewis?
Yes, motion passed. May I have a motion that the Board of Education accepts the Operational Funds Expenditure Report for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2025 as presented?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Goodrich?
Epstein.
Miller?
Yes.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Radzinski?
Yes.
McCullough?
No.
Lewis?
Yes, motion passed. May I have a motion that the Board of Education accepts the report on shared services or outsourcing for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2025 as presented?
Yes, so, one motion. You looking for a motion?
Yes.
Got one.
Second.
Who's taking it?
Leo.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Radzinski?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Yes.
McCullough?
Yes.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes, motion passed. Does anyone have any committee reports?
Uh, Bensonville Foundation will meet tomorrow. I believe we had two small requests. If I read my emails correctly, and then we're waiting for a financial balance to help us move forward. So more at next meeting.
ISAB, this Friday, majority of the board and some other administrators will be going downtown for the Triple I conference.
And just a quick reminder with that, that the recommendation is for President Lewis to, uh, is in agreement with the committee report that was shared uh, prior. If you have any thoughts on, on those votes, he is the voting member of the body. And uh, so just be aware of that. That occurs on Saturday. Uh, I will say, uh, the NetSec meeting I attended um, was at Lincoln Academy. And it was, uh, the, the speaker was one of our students who's actually transitioning back to Fenton at the semester. There's some great pride from him and, and his mother was there also. So it was nice to see how he's developed some coping strategies and, and looking forward to his return. So that was, that was the NetSec meeting, Len meeting. Many of the same things that, that you even heard tonight about the transportation fund being low. This is happening in many districts. I was at a superintendent meeting this morning, and it was brought, brought up again. So we're, our, the issue that we're dealing with there is not unique to, to Fenton. However, you know, we appreciate Doug's efforts in identifying it and, and putting a plan together moving forward.
Alternative finance facility meeting is scheduled at 6:00 PM prior to the regular meeting. Our next board meeting is Wednesday, December the 17th, 2025 at 7:00 PM. Triple I is Friday, November 21st through Sunday, November 23rd. Tentative special meeting for the 2026, 2027 Superintendent Search is scheduled for Wednesday, December the 3rd, 2025, and Thursday, December the 4th, 2025. May I have a motion and a second to go into closed session for the following? Five Illinois CS, 120 slash 2 C1. The appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of Fenton School District 100. Two, five ILCS 120 slash 2 C2. Collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees. Three, five ILCS 120 slash 2 C12. Litigation when an action against affecting or on behalf of the particular body, public body, has been filed and is pending before a court or administrative tribunal. Or when the public body finds that an action is probable or imminent in which these, in which case, the basis for the finding shall be recorded and entered into the minutes of the closed meeting.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Radzinski?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Figaro?
Yes.
McCullough?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes, motion passed, we're in close, well, going to close.
May I have a motion and a second to go back into open session?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Miller?
Yes.
Figueroa?
Yes.
Rosinski?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Yes.
McCullough?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes, uh, motion passed, back in open session.